Good evening and welcome. Today is February 13th, and we're here for the School Board ISD 196 meeting. I'd ask you to rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing to recognize and for a moment of silence, the passing away of Eastview High School junior, Jefferson O'Hagan. We'll do that right after the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairperson Corey Johnson is not available for this meeting, so I, as vice chair, will be running it in his place. Before we start board, I'd like to get an approval for the agenda, but vision to the agenda. That's the January 9th regular school board meeting minutes. That will be moved to the next board meeting. With that, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bianca, second by Sakawden. All in favor say aye, and those opposed say no.
Aye.
Alright, passes on a six to zero vote. Alright, we're here at perhaps the most wonderful part of the agenda that we all look forward to so very much. This is a bucket filling section for all of us where we get to honor and celebrate the success of our students and our staff. I would request, however, the audience remain in their seats throughout the entirety of this section so we can celebrate each other as we go through this wonderful section. And with that, I'd like to call upon Ms. Sally Soliday to talk about the Magnet Schools of America Merit Award.
Good evening, Chairperson Isaacs, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am here tonight to celebrate and recognize two of our elementary magnet schools who have received national recognition in the Magnet Schools of America 2023 Merit Program. Principal Adriana Henderson and Assistant Administrator Alyssa Bartosch are representing Glacier Hills Elementary School of Arts and Science, and they are one of only 24 schools in the nation, including just two in Minnesota, to be selected a top school of excellence. The School of Excellence Award is given to a select group of magnet schools that have demonstrated the highest level of excellence in all facets of the merit award application. Principal Logan Schultz is representing Echo Park Elementary School of Leadership Engineering and Technology, and is being celebrated and recognized as a school of distinction. Echo Park is one of four schools in Minnesota receiving the Merit Schools of Distinction Award. The merit awards of excellence and distinction recognize magnet schools that show a commitment to high academic standards, curriculum innovation, successful desegregation and diversity efforts, specialized teaching staffs, and parent and community involvement. Glacier Hills and Echo Park have received merit awards previously, as have the other three magnet schools in District 196, Cedar Park Elementary STEM School, Diamond Path Elementary School of International Studies, and Oak Ridge Elementary School of Leadership Environmental and Health Sciences. Please join me in congratulating these principals and their staff and students and families on receiving these prestigious awards.[275.02][275.02](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Chairperson Isaacs, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. We are greatly honored to be recognized as a top school of excellence by Magnet Schools of America. I would like to thank our school board, our administration, and community members for supporting our school. We are very appreciative.
Chairperson Isaacs, school board members, Superintendent Krieger, I want to echo a lot of what Adriana just shared, and thank you all for your support of magnet schools. They offer a diversified experience for our students, whether it's leadership engineering and technology at Echo Park, arts and sciences at Glacier Hills. Our magnet schools add value to our student experience, and we cannot do that without your support. And also a thank you to our devoted staff and our students for this outstanding award. It's a great way to honor and recognize our community, so thank you.[335.28][335.28](APPLAUSE).
Next, I'd like to call up Coach Gretchen Strimmel, who represents the Rosemount High School Girls AAA Soccer State Champions.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here today, Vice Chairperson Isaacs, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. We really appreciate the opportunity to be recognized for all these ladies' hard work these past years. We knew this would be a special year even before it started. I had a senior group who had been dedicated to the program since they sat and watched when we competed in 2016. They, the seniors, have been at the state tournament three out of the last four years. They accumulate 10 college, or to be college soccer players, and more to come. When you start the year ranked number one, the road to the bank is a long one. There are lots of obstacles, and there are lots of hills, and you seem to have a giant target on your back. These ladies stormed through the season. They were full steam ahead. They were undefeated in the conference. They were only scored on once in conference play. They earned themselves home seed all the way to the state tournament, and they were able to earn a trip to the state tournament while playing on our beautifully new turf stadium field, which was awesome. By far, our closest games were that, that we played in the state tournament, but they rose to every challenge. Everything we asked of them, they did, and they adjusted, and they worked, and we couldn't be more proud of everything they've accomplished. They ended the season with a record of 21-1. They had 18 shutouts on the season. They scored 84 goals, and were scored on only five times. I have six all-conference players, three all-conference honorable mentions, four first-team all-state players, one missed soccer candidate, four all-state tournament team, two United Coaches Association All-Region players, one All-American honorable mention, one All-American, and one Gatorade Player of the Year candidate. This team was stacked. They end conference 9-0, they won the section, and they finished it off by winning their championship, which was their goal. Before I introduce these lovely ladies, I'd like to recognize the parents that are here tonight. Without their time and dedication, and I'm sure the girls would attest to the long hours they've spent hauling you around, none of this could have been possible. I have a wonderful booster club and wonderful parent support, so we really thank those parents. So I'm going to go through and introduce the girls. We'll start with goaltender, goaltender, I've been watching hockey, goalkeeper, Jordan Heck. Midfielder Ryland Rintul. Midfielder Lisette Thurman. Defender Olivia Bull. Midfielder Taylor Heimerle. Defender Grace Bartlam. Midfielder Ava Great. Forward Shay Payne. Forward Sydney Gilbertson. Midfielder Skylar Heimerle. Midfielder Ava Thompson. And midfielder Caitlin Miller, Molly Miller, sorry. My goodness. Thank you very much for having us. Ladies, come on through.
Alright, finish business here, huh?[605.16][605.16](APPLAUSE).
So impressive, so, so, so impressive. Amazing. So impressive. Thank you, Bianca, so much for coming tonight. What an impressive, now are you all seniors? Congratulations. Oh, two juniors, so we're starting over again.
Congratulations. Well done.
Oh my gosh. A fantastic, congratulations, congratulations. So impressive, so impressive. Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Nice job, Coach.
Yep. Next, I'd love to call up, call upon Head Coach Erdman and the Rosemount High School
Good evening, board members, Vice Chair Isaacs, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Jeff Erdman, I'm the head football coach at Rosemount High School. I've got three of our representatives, our captains, three of our four captains are here with me. We did not bring all 88 guys. We finished the season 12-1, became district champs, section champs, and state 6A runner-ups. Our team was successful because our student athletes worked hard and played at a very high level all season against the toughest schedule we've had in the 24 years I've been at Rosemount. This was one of the most unselfish teams that we've ever had the privilege of coaching in my entire career. On behalf of the players and coaches, we appreciate the recognition tonight. I would like to introduce these captains. All three of these young men had fantastic seasons themselves, and were wonderful leaders in helping develop that culture of success. So we have Noah Lindsay, offensive line, Cade Gilbertson, linebacker tight end, and Will Priest, running back. And I believe their parents are also here tonight, and the support they've had, and all the parents in our program is greatly appreciated. So, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for supporting our program, thank you for recognizing the accomplishment this year of our squad, and I'll echo what Coach Strammell said, thank you for turf fields. We greatly appreciate that, so thank you so much.[760.01][760.01](APPLAUSE).
What an awesome season, so much fun to be down there and watching you guys. Congratulations.
Great job, thanks for coming. Great job, thank you for coming.
Awesome, it's awesome to stand on there and watch.
Next up is the state debate tournament runners-up. I'd call upon speech and debate coach Chris McDonald to the podium.
Well, here we are again. I feel like this is my regular appearance before the board. Thank you to Vice Chair Isaacs and to Superintendent Mary Krieger, as well as the rest of the board, for once again having the debate program up here. I'm actually going to be joined as well by Mr. Nick Smith and his student from Apple Valley. I'll let Nick come up and introduce his student and her accomplishments at the state debate tournament. As many of you know, debate is an exceptional activity, but it takes a lot of hard work and dedication and time to excel at debates, and to excel at the level that all three of my students have, as well as Mr. Smith's student at Apple Valley, takes a lot of time and energy and effort. But that energy and effort is not only due to their hard work, it's all of my assisting coaches and the assisting coaches at Apple Valley that helped to make that a reality. So for Abiha, that would be Mr. Ross Eichley, who is her assist, who is my assistant coach and heads up the program for congressional debate. And then for Erica and Archon, in policy debate, I have Mr. Bob Grovan, along with some assistants Josh Grovan, who is Bob's son, as well as Greg Quick and Reese Peters, to help with the team to make them and help them get there. But in addition to that, of course, is their parents, and all of their parents are here in the audience today, and they can tell you a lot of sacrifices that are made in terms of time, energy, and effort to not only get their children to where we're going, but to support them in all they do. And when it doesn't go so well, that's when they have to support them the most, because sometimes, you know, it doesn't quite go the way that we want it to go. Huge congratulations this year to my group of students. I didn't bring all 92 of the team members from Egan High School, from the debate team, but I only brought the select few. So runners-up in state policy debate this year, Eric Lee and Archon Sen, and state runner-up in congressional debate, Abiha Keshif. So congratulations and thank you to the board for the recognition and the continued support of our program at Egan High School. Now I'm going to call Nick up.
Hello, Superintendent and board members. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Nick Smith. I am the head debate coach at Apple Valley High School, and I am excited to introduce Leah Willingham, who placed as the runner-up in Lincoln Douglas Debate at the state tournament. Leah debated the topic "Justice Requires Open Borders for Human Migration," which I think was a very timely and interesting topic, and Leah worked incredibly hard, and the results show themselves. I had no doubt that Leah would have a wonderful tournament. She is a great captain of the team, mentoring the younger students. She is an incredibly hard worker, an excellent critical thinker, and I am proud to have had the opportunity to work with her this year, and we still have a number of tournaments coming up, including the national tournament, and I am greatly looking forward to it, so I would like to congratulate Leah Willingham on being the state runner-up in Lincoln Douglas Debate.[1000.12][1000.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Awesome job. Good work. Thank you so much. Awesome job. Nice to see you again. Awesome job. Always always.
Well done, thank you. Thank you, well done.
Nice job. Thank you so much. Nice to see you again. Yeah.
We can give a few minutes for folks to leave if they need to. Thank you again for coming and celebrating with us, it's tremendous. And with that, we'll move to the superintendent's recognition.
Okay, and we have even more accolades to share about our wonderful students. I'll start off with congratulations to juniors Emily Percival of Eastview High School and Mason Hokenga of Egan High School on being selected recipients of the 2023 Excellence in Community Education and Leadership Award for the '23 school year. Sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League, the Xcel Awards recognize high school juniors who are active in fine arts and athletic activities, who demonstrate leadership qualities, and who are model citizens in their community. Each high school in the state can nominate one junior, boy, and a girl for the Xcel Awards. Two recipients are selected from each of the eight competitive regions in the state for both Class A and Double-A schools. The other Xcel Award nominees from District 196 are Ellen Stumbo and Jaden Houter of Apple Valley High School, Ava Birch of Egan High School, Connor Berry of Eastview High School, and Alishka Takeofali and Gavin Conway of Rosemount High School. Next, I would like to congratulate the eight District 196 seniors who were nominated for the Academics Arts and Athletics Award. The AAA goes to nominated seniors with a three-point or higher grade point average who participate in athletic and fine arts programs and exhibit exemplary citizenship and the highest standards of sportsmanship and conduct. Each high school in the state can nominate one senior, boy, and a girl for the award. Section and state AAA award recipients will be selected this spring from a list of nominees. The AAA award nominees from District 196 are Amy Tong and Apollo Oths of Apple Valley High School, Yan Li and Archon Sen of Egan High School, Sophia Wang and Nathan Buckley of Eastview High School, and Jessa Snipes and Grantham Green of Rosemount High School. And congratulations to the cast and crew of Egan High School's one-act play on qualifying to perform at the state one-act play festival in St. Paul last week. And congratulations and good luck to the District 196 students who qualified to compete in the state Alpine and Nordic Ski tournaments that will be held later this week in Bewabik. In Alpine, the Egan High School girls qualified as a team, and in Nordic, the combined District 196 boys team and the combined Egan Eastview girls team both qualified for the team competition.
Thank you for that update, Superintendent Krieger. Next is the Special Communication Request section, and since nobody has signed up, we will move to the consent agenda. As part of the consent agenda, the items of the agenda include the minutes of the January 23rd special school board meeting, gifts, grants, advertising revenue, treasurer's report for December 2022, a summary of claims for December 2022, schedule of investments for December 2022, revenues and expenditures report for December 2022, sale of retired iPads and laptops, RFP, purchase of uninterruptible power supply, RFP, 2023-24 roof rehabilitation, personnel, resolution pursuant to Minnesota Statute 354.66, qualifying part-time teachers, pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time employees, Raising Canes Chicken Fingers sponsorship agreement, agreement for student teaching experience Concordia College, sorry, I missed one, agreement for clinical experience Western Governors University, and finally, school bus purchases. Are there any items that board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Since this is an action item, I'll ask for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bianca, and a second by Sakawden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The vote passes on a six to zero vote. Moving into old business, we will look at Policy 506, Student Welfare, and I'll invite Jill to join us at the podium.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Krieger. I am before you tonight with old business, taking a look at Policy 506, Student Welfare. When I was before you with this policy in January, we went through the proposed changes in great detail, as well as the rationale. Tonight, I'll keep it short, and I won't repeat that detail and rationale, other than to say that the administration seeks to amend Policy 506 to allow district schools to stock and administer opioid antagonists such as naloxone, commonly referred to as Narcan. The administration wishes to have this access and authority in order to respond to the current opiate crisis, and the revised policy will allow licensed school nurses to administer the naloxone in the event of a suspected overdose. If approved tonight, the administration will determine the schools in which to stock naloxone, train school nurses district-wide, revise district regulations to comport with the revised policy, and procure the naloxone. At this time, I seek your approval of the policy, but I am available to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Since this is an action item, I will ask for a motion and a second.
Motion, approve.
Second.
Motion by Art, second by Jackie. Before we go to a vote, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, are there questions and comments from, from the board? Thank you. All in favor for a passing of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The vote passes on a six to zero margin. I'd like to invite Mary.
Thank you. I just would like to thank our attorney, Jill Coyle, and our lead health services coordinator, Deb Meyer, for bringing this to us, and it's a sad situation, but I think it really helps to support, to do everything we can do to support a healthy school environment for students and staff, and so thank you, and I'm glad that we'll have this in place.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jill. Next, we have new business. We'll review the 2023-24 capital expenditure budget, and I'll call Christopher Anyango Robshaw to the podium.
Good evening, Vice Chair Isaacs, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, and our public stakeholders. Christopher Anyango Robshaw, Coordinator of Finance, and I am here to review our 2023-24 capital expenditure budget. This is a little bit off-cycle as far as how we bring this. It's because when we set up the capital, we want to do, make sure we can place orders ahead of time, so that's why this comes a little bit earlier. But then we will bring the preliminary budget for the board to take action on sometime in, in June. Just to kind of talk through what we're going through, typically, there are three sections. When we talk capital, we're talking about big picture items. So the first item would be bonds, and typically, we will use bonds to purchase or build facilities. Now, once the facility is in place, the two capital sources that I'm going to be discussing today are the ones that come into play. We have operating capital, which I would say, when you think about it, it's those new things that we bring into a facility, or if we need to remodel, then we use operating capital for, for those remodeling work. So then, these funds flow to us from the state. We are receiving $226 per people unit in the, in the coming fiscal year, an additional $31 per year-round people unit. It does include lease levy. So then, the total revenues that we're anticipating to receive for operating capital is $14.8 million, and that's for FY24. When you compare, and this is in your board packet, what we received last year, at least what we were projecting to receive for FY23 versus what we're projecting to receive for FY24, you will notice a $600,000 reduction in aid that is being calculated. Right around this time of the prior fiscal year, we were anticipating that we would have carryover of fund balance for operating capital of $2.59 million. What we're anticipating for this year, as of June 30th of 2023, is that our carryover into next year will be 1.98 million. So the reduction of $600,000 that we are seeing from prior year to current year has to do with our estimates on how much we will have of a fund balance. Overall, the state aid that we are projected to receive without that fund balance is stable from prior to current year. It is based on student enrollment, and it's not, there's not a big fluctuation in those. Our expenditures that are projected for the operating capital, we have lease levy expenses of $5.5 million and curriculum purchases of $5.1 million. So those take up a bulk, the bulk of what we are projecting. Technology, equipment purchases, and allocations for buildings to use, those adding up at $3 million. We're projecting to have a fund balance of just shy of $1 million heading into the FY25, at the end of FY24. So now we have the building, we know how we are purchasing or funding new additions, we need to maintain the building. So long-term facilities maintenance revenue is available for us to make replacements of facilities or facility fixtures. So this is due to wear and tear or upgrades for health and safety. We receive these funds, again, through the Minnesota Department of Ed, through the general fund. $380 is the appropriation per people unit, and does include allocations for health and safety. We are projecting that we will receive $16.8 million for FY24. This is an increase of $4 million from prior year. Each year, we bring to the school board, and the Department of Ed approves our 10-year plan. So what we are projecting, we will spend for FY24, which is part of that MDE-approved plan, would be in line to spend the $16.8 million that has been included in the levy and is anticipated as far as aid. This is the first reading of this budget. We will be bringing it back in April, on April 10th, at which point, we will be expecting board action. In the meantime, I'll entertain any questions or provide clarifications on these two budget items.
Thank you, Christopher. Since this is the first reading, like you mentioned, we won't be voting on it, but before I welcome the board for their questions, their comments, I'd like to see if anyone in the audience has any questions or comments for Christopher. Alright, seeing none, anyone from the board have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, anyone from the Board have any questions or comments?
Christopher, I have a quick question. You said that we were down about $600,000, and the state funding is flat. Is it because we underforecasted the expenses? Is that?
So there are multiple, there are two components of how we calculate the aid. So there's state aid, there's which, there's a lease levy component. Both of those are based on our student numbers. So our student numbers are staying flat. Within the document we provided is our prior year carryover. So then, at this point last year, what we were projecting, we would end the fiscal year, so this would be fiscal year '22, we were projecting that we would have $2.5 million in fund balance. Right now, what we're projecting for the end of fiscal year '23 is 1.9 million. So that's $600,000 reduction, has to do with our estimate for how much of a fund balance we will be carrying into the coming fiscal year.
Thank you, very helpful. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Now, we will move to the other action part of our agenda, and in that, we will talk about the Native American Parent Advisory Council Committee Resolution of Concurrents, for which I'll invite Michael Bolsoni, Lisa Turgeon, and Nicole Lontree-Broval to the podium.
Good evening, Vice Chairperson Isaacs, School Board Member Superintendent Krieger, our groups on their way up here. Nicole Lontree-Broval is a coach in Eagan, and she's on her way. Luckily, she's third in line in the presentation, so by the time we get to her, we should be okay. My name, as you mentioned, is Michael Bolsoni. I'm the Director of Secondary Education, and in this role, I also support our district's American Indian Education Program. And joining us, speaking tonight, will also be Lisa Turgeon, our American Indian Education Specialist, and Nicole Lontree-Broval, who is our NAIPAC chairperson. And NAIPAC is our Native American Parent Advisory Committee. So we are here tonight to provide an overview and an update on the program and present the Resolution of Concurrents. We will ask for your approval of this resolution at the end of the presentation. On January 26, 2023, members of the Native American Parent Advisory Committee, NAIPAC, met to discuss the state of American Indian education in the district and to prepare the annual compliance documentation, which is presented to the school board each year. This process includes a review of the role of NAIPAC, student achievement data, and the District 196 American Indian Education Parent and Guardian Survey that is designed to provide feedback to the program and help us with future years' planning. Committee members also discuss the progress on their current goals, enhancements to the program, and they also identify goals for the future. So we have a PowerPoint tonight for you, it's on the screen, and we will begin with Lisa Turgeon, providing an overview and an update on the District 196 American Indian Education Program.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Lisa Turgeon. First thing, before we start our presentation, I wanted to give a Dakota land acknowledgement. A land acknowledgement is kind of a formal recognition of the indigenous peoples who have taken care of this land, and so, we have developed a land acknowledgement that we will share right now. We want to acknowledge that District 196 resides within Minnesota Makachee, a Dakota place, and that this land has been the homeland of the Dakota People in the Ochete-Shakewin Seven Council Fire for every generation since their creation, Epedote. Minnesota Makachee, the land where waters reflect the sky, is Dakota land. Minnesota is also the home of the Anishinaabe and many other indigenous peoples who have and do contribute to the overall foundation of this region. We encourage all members of the District 196 community to join us in learning more about the people, contributions, sovereignty, and treaty rights of the Dakota and Anishinaabe people. District 196 will continue to strengthen our relationship with Minnesota's 11 sovereign nations and indigenous communities, families, and students. So first, my name is Lisa Turgeon. I'm the Program Specialist for the Indian Education Program. I am from the Sincrey Band of Chippewa Indians in Wisconsin, and I wanted to introduce our staff. Behind me, we have Joseph Muso, who comes from the Sandy Bay First Nation, who is Ojibwe in Dakota. We have Georgia Valandra, who's from the Osage Nation of Oklahoma, Comanche Nation of Oklahoma, and Nez Perce Tribe of Idaho. We also have Fonda Smith and Francesca Stanstrong, who couldn't make it today, but they are from the Leech Lake Band of Ojibwe and White Earth Nations. And so, next, we'll kind of overview a little bit about our Indian Ed program here in District 196. So in our program is a supplemental program that supports the academic, cultural, social, emotional needs of our students, our indigenous students here in our schools. Indian education has been around for just about over 50 years, and it was created from the Indian Education Act of 1972. We work with preschool students up through 21, as our students are pursuing their high school diplomas, and our goal is to meet the unique academic and cultural needs of our learners here in District 196. Our primary funding sources come from Title VI, which is Indian education funding at the federal level, and also MDE, Indian education aid. We have a number of goals and objectives that we work towards. So through MDE, we have five goals listed here in the PowerPoint, and Title VI, we have four goals, and some of those goals kind of overlap. A majority of them have to do with the academic achievement of our students, providing cultural learning and enhancing cultural identity and awareness, and also working with the parents of our students in the district. One thing that we do every year is we survey our community. We want to know from our parents and guardians what we can do as a program to best support their child. And so, we have a needs assessment that we provide every school year, and so, these have been the top responses. Last school year, summer programming was one of our top responses from our parents that they wanted to see more of. We traditionally never had real summer programming, and so, last school year, we started kind of developing summer programs, and it's been very successful. Some of the things we have done is we've worked with our secondary students to teach them how to make their own Ojibwe-style pucker toe moccasins, and we've also taken students down to the Prairie Island Indian community to visit their indigenous medicine gardens and also their buffalo farm that they have there with their community. This year, our top response was for cultural family engagement events, and some of those events include our Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration. We also have traditional arts classes that we offer a variety of different subjects or crafts and lessons that we teach our families. We just had a ribbon skirt and ribbon shirt making class this past weekend, and we also offer a variety of other regalia-making classes. And we have, I'm going to just keep moving because there's going to be a lot more about that coming. So some of the family engagement programs, like I said, included our Indigenous Peoples' Day. We also have a winter gathering. We've also had two events where we invited indigenous authors to come talk with our students. So we had Monique Grace Smith come, and she provided free books for all our students. Of her new title is Braiding Sweetgrass. It's an adapted book for younger readers, and we also have a lot more coming up. One of our highlights that we have every year is our graduation honoring at the end of the year on May, this year's going to be on May 13. So we'll definitely share that information with all school board members and make sure that you are all invited to come. The other, one of the main goals that we have is the academic needs of our students, and so, we, like I said, we work with our pre-K through high school students. We offer progress monitoring for our secondary students. We have unique book clubs and literacy programming for our elementary students, and we also offer family programming. We've, each year, we do a math night, a literacy night, and a STEM event focused on family programming with those students. And so, it's shared a couple photos here from some events this past school year. The one photo with the youngsters on the top is from our math night, where Georgia created this really great program. They were learning about the Winter Count and storytelling through illustrations. Down below, that photo is our middle school groups from Dakota Hills, where they created a sign to let their, to celebrate Native American Heritage Month in November and to let their community know that we are on Dakota land. And then, the photo to the right of that is, we took our high school students to Hocho Kada Tee, which is the Dwellers on the Lake exhibit for the Shakopee-Minowacansu community, and they were there to learn about the Dakota people and to learn how to do a parflesh art project. And so, we have a lot more things coming up ahead. As I said, we have the STEM night, and then also, new this year, our CFA Georgia is going to be arranging for students to go to a youth summit based on careers in medicine, and that's going to be coming up in April. So that's a new thing that we're doing this year, bringing some middle school students there, along with our high school leaders from Appa Valley and Eastview, to help out with that field trip. So our program also offers a lot of college and career readiness programs. Our big program that we do each year is our ACT prep course or classes, is a series, a weekly class series for our 11th graders, but we also open it up for 10th graders wishing to kind of get a head start on that, preparing for the ACT. And we also open it up for 12th graders who wanted some additional support if they're planning to take the test again. So each year, we focus on, our goal is to improve our average composite score, and so, our data, I don't have the data with me right now, but our data each year seems to be meeting our goals for that program.
Meeting or exceeding your goals.
Meeting or exceeding, yes, absolutely.
It's very impressive.
Yep. So the next I wanted to share is our cultural enrichment, learning opportunities that we provide our students. So year after year, as you could see, starting from our data collection in school year 2018, each year, we have added more culture enrichment programming. The one year, I think I shared this last year, was the, our pandemic year, I guess, so it was kind of difficult to provide as many opportunities, but this school year, we're definitely on our way to meeting that same number of opportunities for our students and our families. So here are just, these are programs that we provided, just the first couple months of the school year, July through October, it was a large number of programs that we provided our students. At the top, you could see the moccasins, that was one of our students' moccasins they made over the summer. This, from November through now, we have continued our drum and dance classes that we've had and offered more arts and family classroom opportunities. And then, looking ahead, looking ahead, we are looking forward to inviting an ONIDA educator, his name's Dan Neinhem, and we're going to be doing a winter Indigenous Games event, and we're also going to be doing an Indigenous Foods event with him, teaching our students some of our, how to cook our indigenous, in our indigenous ingredients. And of course, we also always have, at the end of the year, a lacrosse event with Twin Cities Native Lacrosse, where we'll have a scrimmage right before the South of the River Powell, which will be on May 6 this school year at Burnsville High School. We also continue our preschool outreach. We're trying to focus on those cultural enrichment learning opportunities, but also kindergarten readiness. And so, we had a six-part series, working with our preschool families this year in partnership with ECFE, who also devoted some of their budget to provide this opportunity for our families as well. And again, we also do a lot of work with our teachers and our literacy coaches and social studies teachers. So we offer learning trunks, and then we have a lending library that our teachers can use. We also have a monthly newsletter that goes out, that goes out to all staff across the district, and each month has a different subject. And so, we try to just encourage learning across even jobs, like occupation, like, we have people from the district office emailing about, you know, how, you know, how they enjoyed reading our newsletters each month. We've also worked with teachers, and we support teachers with classroom resources and also classroom presentations. And we also have, our Chair of our Parent Committee and I are working with Todd Beach, with the social studies curriculum writing team as well. And then, some highlights this year, and I think this is my last slide. Highlight this year is, we started with our elementary schools, we started an Ojibwe Language Club, so we started that in five schools where we're visiting, visiting our elementary age students and just offering a space for learning our language. And so, we're hoping to expand it in some capacity as we go, move forward. And we've also had, our staff were able to go to the National Indian Education Conference this year, which is a really great learning opportunity for our staffs to network and also to learn how we can improve as an Indian Ed program. And then, the last thing I wanted to share is that we've worked with Nandi Rick at the district office, creating a database for our students, so that we, as staff and advocates for our students can, we can pinpoint which students might need more additional supports, but we could also pinpoint students that we feel have the potential for accelerated learning, and who should be taking PSEO and who should be taking AP. So it's definitely a really good tool that we can use with our program to better support our students. And with that, I wanted to bring up our Chairperson of our Native American Parent Advisory Committee, and that is Nicole Lontree-Broval.
Good evening, it's great to be here. I'm Nicole Lontree-Broval, and I am the Chairperson of our Native American Parent Advisory Committee. I am a citizen of the Ho-Chunk Nation and a descendant of the Turtle Mountain Band of Chippewa. I have three children in the district, very different age groups. I have a middle schooler that's in seventh grade, a second grader, and a preschooler. So all of Lisa's things that she just shared, all the wonderful work that she's doing and our program is doing, impacts each one of my students each day at school. So each year, we have our vote of concurrents, and this year, our parents decided that our district and our program are in concurrents. And we also always do recommendations, and we felt like last year, a lot of our recommendations were met. We saw increase in Native American representation at the district level as far as hiring teachers, staff, admin. That was something that was really important to us. We saw the work that we did with the curriculum. Lisa and I are both on this, two separate social studies committees with Dr. Beach, and then, obviously, working with teaching and learning and making more of an impact in our other curriculum across grades. So this year, some of the recommendations that we had was, we wanted to follow through with the implementation of our Ojibwe language course that we had for our high schoolers. So we started that last year, and we just want to make sure that it follows through this year. And with the work of Mr. Bolsoni, we have made it go online. So it'll be a part of 196 Online, and it'll be available to our kids, so we're hoping that that process, we find a language teacher, and so that that can start next year. We also want to continue improving the language, Ojibwe and Dakota language throughout the second and fourth grade curriculum. I know that my second grader is going through that right now, and he's coming home, and he's like, "Mom, how do I say this word?" And I'm like, "Okay, I'll help you," right? And, but he's really lucky that he has a parent that can help him. Not all of our kids have that benefit, so I would like our teachers to have a little bit more training with that, and that's my second recommendation. But also, I want more of our Indian Ed kids to participate in our language groups that we just started. So we want to see if we can expand that a little bit more, but that also comes with more probably time and manpower to help. We want to continue to strengthen the efforts with our American Indian curriculum across all subject areas, specifically to the second and fourth grade units. We have a lot of resources that are available for teachers, and we want to be able to provide training and have them training and have them be comfortable teaching that curriculum. And that also ties into that language piece, where we want them to be comfortable speaking those words and talking about, you know, our Ojibwe and Dakota places in Minnesota, and just have more of that knowledge so that they can really make an impact with all of our students. Our third recommendation is to create American Indian Studies elective courses at the high school level. A couple ideas that we had were United States History through an American Indian perspective or Literature courses. And this would benefit all students in District 196. It wouldn't just be our Indigenous students that could take these classes. And I have had discussions with Dr. Beach about it, and he's very excited to work with us on this, so we're hoping that we can make that happen as well. And then one of the other areas that we noticed from our parent survey that there was a need for was more academic coaching with our middle school kids. They lost out, you know, due to the pandemic over a couple of years. We want to make sure that they are ready for high school, and we want to set them up for success. So we're looking at including some culturally relevant strategies to help their academic performance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As you can see, we have a very talented staff and some very dedicated parent leaders, and I think the program shows that in so many ways. So this is an action item for you tonight, and we can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Like Michael said, this is an action item tonight, so I'll ask for a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion from Art, second from Bianca. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Singnan, questions and comments from the board? Art?
I just want to, you know, point out to the broader community that so much of what happens in our American Indian program is open to the broader community, the gatherings that we have, the various cultural events, and we'd really love to see people from the community come and support the program and to also learn about our community and our ongoing contributions to this community. One thing that I've always, my children came up through the American Indian program here, and now my daughter Katie's returned as a teacher in our district. And one of the things that I've always been struck by is the the strong blend of academic and cultural programming that the program provides to our families. It's not just about the book learning. It's not just about, you know, the learning about being a native person and doing, you know, crafts and things. It's it's that blend. It's the things that the kids need. It's that holistic approach that our kids need for their education and knowing that they fit in our district and, you know, how they can be successful. So thanks to Lisa and the entire staff and to the parent committee. Just keep doing what you're doing. It's, I've enjoyed every event I've been to this year, and I hope to get to a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Go ahead, Bianca.
I I got the privilege to attend the honoring ceremony last year, and it was so fantastic to see the the kindergartners as they moved on and the fifth graders and the eighth graders and the seniors. So I can't emphasize what Art said, trying to get out to see the events. We were able to go to the Powo at Burnsville as well, and I just look forward to more of those. I wrote down May 13th honoring ceremony, so I've got it on my calendar, so thank you.
Do you have the lacrosse game on there?
I don't. Oh, wait, I do. That's the sixth, right? I think she said it's the sixth. Two events, yeah. Yep, yep.
Ms. Jackie?
Well, I would like to thank you, too. I'm always at awe in awe of what you do when you survey your parents and and actually do what your parents want you to do. And it is that combination between academics and cultural activities. I'm just, I'm always in awe of the exciting opportunities that you bring to your students and and all of the students. And how cool is this? You've got 27 elementary school students right now taking a language class? Is that during the day or is that a after school? So it is during the day. Wonderful. Well, look at the growth that that brings. And Michael will have to get on that high school thing because eventually, as they keep going, they'll go up into that. So wonderful. I'm always impressed at the work that you do. And I think some of the concerns that you brought forward are things that we can work on together and and continue deepening that that relationship between the districts. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie.
One quick comment. So I just want to thank Michael and Lisa and Nicole and Georgia and everyone that's part of this leadership team, because it is phenomenal. And going to those events matters, and I know it matters for kids because you're seeing the kinds of results that we want for every child in this district. And so it doesn't just happen. When you look at all those events, when you look at the time and the talent, and I think part of it is you have a mindset, if someone comes forward and says, you know, this would be great, or we need this, you say how? You don't say, should we or shouldn't we? You say, yep, this is how we're going to figure it out. So kudos to all of you, and thank you. You make such an impact in our district every day. Thanks.
You know, I'll kind of add to that as well, and I'll actually steal one of Jackie's where I always said in awe and amazement at the expansive amount of diverse opportunities you folks create across the district for our communities, for our students. You know, it is remarkable to see, and we can feel the commitment, the authenticity that comes from each one of you. So all of these wonderful results are an outcome of this. And District 196 is truly grateful to each one of you for all that you do for us. And I've had the privilege to attend some of these events as well, and I leave with my bucket filled every single time. So just thank you. You folks are changing the trajectories of 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 kids and changing just how our community embraces this. So this is just a ton of gratitude and a ton of thank you for all of that. Yes.
I'll just quickly add to say thank you. I truly appreciate the parent engagement. You guys already have a very good advance, and by already February 7th, you had 23 compared to last year. It's going to be a wonderful year, so keep up doing the good job. Truly appreciate the presentations. Thank you.
So with this, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, this passes by a six to zero margin. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you.
With that, I'll call Chris McDonald to talk about the National Speech and Debate Education Day.
Well, once again, it feels like it's my annual time to come entertain the school board. Once again, a huge thank you to Vice Chair Isaacs, Superintendent Krieger, and the rest of the board members. To once again, here we are for our annual celebration of speech and debate activities. District 196 has been integral, not only here in the state of Minnesota, but across the country in setting the standard for what it means for excellence in speech and debate. Even if we just look at like last year's state tournaments when we were here celebrating the students, or this year's state debate tournaments, celebrating these students, or last summer's national tournament where we had a humor national champion from Apple Valley and the runner-up from Eagan. So just in those events, and we think about the personalities, the people who we've had the privilege in this district of having lead our programs, whether that's Pam Katie Wykoff at Apple Valley, or Joni Anker at Eagan High School, Todd Herring over at Eastview High School, Dr. Polly Rykowski and her amazing career throughout that entire time being at both Rosemount and Apple Valley and at Eagan. Those individuals, they drove, they were the pioneers that made District 196 what it is today, put it on the map as a national competitive and educational group of individuals, bringing many students the privilege and honor of learning and developing a set of skills that will help them for the rest of their lives. And a lot of that is because of our support from the school board, from administration, from Michael Bolsoni, all the way up to Mary Krieger, up in the superintendent's office. There is nothing that we cannot accomplish without that support. And so we thank you today as we celebrate National Speech and Debate Day, and we hope that you will once again endorse this honor.
Thank you very much. This is an action item as well, so I'll ask for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Bianca, second by Sekoudan. Before we move to a full vote, are there questions from the audience? Questions or comments from the board? I'll just say maybe one quick thing. You are absolutely correct. You know, the recognition and the investment that we make in speech and debate is part of our DNA now, and it is virtuous cycle that is getting us where we are going. And I'm grateful to people like you who are the engine behind helping us get there. So thank you for your passion, for your investment, and everything that you do in support of furthering this and entrenching this even into our DNA more. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And a huge thank you to the board.
With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Motion.
All right, passes on a six to zero margin. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a great night.
All right, with that, I'll invite Tony Tasher to the podium to talk about the 2023 legislative priorities.
So you're going to make me follow speech today? I'll, I'll add my kudos and congratulations to the speech teams and the many people who, all the work that's been put in. That's one program in my 26 years working for the district that has consistently just shined every year. So, great. Well, we're not here to talk about, I'm not here to talk about speech, but good evening, Acting Chairperson Isaacs, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. I'm here tonight to talk about our 2023 legislative priorities as a district and to ask your approval of those. So the 2023 session actually began on January 3rd and must end by Monday, May 22nd. There have already been well over 1,000 bills introduced, and I don't know if it's a record right now, but it was a record certainly at the time that they talked about the number of bills that had been introduced early into session. So the, we have new legislative districts that were implemented in the state last year, and the newly elected legislators took office when the session started. We have 14 legislators who represent District 196. That's the same number as we had previously, but we now have six senators and eight representatives, whereas previously we had five senators and nine representatives. This is a budget-setting session, an odd-numbered year for the next biennium, so that is obviously the focus of our district's priorities this year. And as we all know, the state has a $17 billion budget surplus to help with that process. Some have said that might hinder the process, but the resources are certainly there. Our advocacy efforts have already started and will continue throughout the 2023 session. On January 6th, we attended the Association of Metropolitan School District's annual legislative preview, which featured comments by Governor Walz on his one Minnesota budget. There were also many legislators in attendance at that meeting as well. Once the priorities are approved, we will share them with district staff and members of the public, and we'll keep these stakeholders informed of developments throughout the 2023 session. And when we reach critical moments during the session, we will reach out to those stakeholders to let them know of the implications of certain bills to to our district. We also meet with our legislators as often as we can. And on February 14th, which is tomorrow, we'll have one of those exciting days. We'll have our District 196 Day at the Capitol. We'll have about 20 members of our Legislative Advisory Council who are going to attend, traveling to St. Paul. This will be the first time we've been back to the Capitol since March of 2020. It was, our visit was just a couple of days before news of the pandemic really broke in Minnesota. So it will be, it will be nice to be back there and roaming the halls, as they say. We have meetings scheduled with 14 legislators, including three of the four education committee chairs. So that's, that's nice. And we're looking forward, like I said, to that opportunity to get back. We also hope to be able to see our Equity Coordinator, Violetta Hernandez-Espanosa, testify on the Teachers of Color, Increased Teachers of Color Act during a meeting of the Senate Education Finance Committee tomorrow. Testifying on bills typically when requested, or always when requested, is a big part of our advocacy efforts in the district. Pictured on this slide here is Mark Stotts, our Director of Finance and Operations, giving testimony last year to the House Education Finance Committee, which he did on several occasions, and I'm sure will be asked to do again as the session moves on. In District 196, the process of establishing our legislative priorities begins with the Legislative Advisory Council. The LAC is a nonpartisan group consisting of seven citizens, a representative from each of the district's other advisory councils, student representatives from our high schools, staff, and three school board members. Each fall, members of the LAC meet to identify possible priorities for the upcoming session. Last November, the LAC held a joint meeting with members of the Budget Advisory Council. We reviewed the previous year's priorities and discussed possible priorities for the 23 session. Using input from that meeting, then, we drafted the priorities that we are presenting for your consideration this evening. So our first overarching priority this session is really something we've been asking the state to provide for more than two decades, and that is adequate, stable, and predictable funding for public schools. There are three parts to our funding priority. The first is the General Education Formula Allowance, which is the single biggest source of revenue that all school districts receive, and it provides the greatest flexibility in how districts can spend it. All districts receive the same amount per student and benefit equally from the General Education Formula Allowance. The allowance, the problem is the allowance has not kept pace with inflation over the last two decades. The difference between the actual General Education Formula Allowance and the inflation-adjusted amount is $1,263 per student, or about 18.4% since 2003. So in the 20, in the last 20 years, the General Education Formula Allowance has lagged by over 18%, $1,200 per student. To help provide needed revenues now and stability for the future, we asked the legislature to increase the General Education Formula Allowance by 4% per year in the next biennium and tie future increases to the annual rate of inflation. The second part of our funding priority is special education funding. The state and federal governments require school districts to provide special education services, but they do not fully fund the cost of providing these services that are so critical to giving each child what they need to be successful. This difference is called the Special Education Cross Subsidy. The cross subsidy in District 196 was $33 million last year. That represents more than 7% of our district's total operating expenditures in 2021, '22. All school districts in Minnesota have a cross subsidy, and all would benefit from increased special education funding. So we ask the legislature to increase the state's portion of special education funding to reduce the special education cross subsidy. The third part of our funding priority involves equalization aid, which was initially created to equalize the impact of school taxes on homeowners in districts with lower percentage, percentages of commercial industrial property value. District 196 is, is one of those districts in terms of having a lower percentage of commercial industrial property compared to the average district. Equalization aid works. The problem is the formulas used to calculate the aid are not indexed for growth, so they provide less aid as total property value grows over time. We asked the legislature to increase equalization of the operating referendum, local optional, and debt service levies, and index the formulas for growth and property values. There's a lot of talk about cutting taxes. This is a tax fairness issue in these districts, so I would urge the legislature to take action on that. on that. Our second overarching priority is to reduce mandates and allow greater local decision-making. Again, familiar from years past, we are frequently talking about reducing mandates. We believe the locally-elected school board members and school district staff are in the best position to understand the needs of their district and how to best meet those needs. First and foremost, we ask the legislature approve no new unfunded mandates and eliminate mandates with unnecessary paperwork and reporting requirements that take time away from adults working with students. The list of mandates we would like to eliminate is quite long, but the other one we listed here is, in our priorities, is to allow school districts to establish school calendars that best meet the needs of students and families in their community. And in the area of local control, we ask that the legislature finally allow school boards to renew previously-approved operating levies at the same or lesser amount without having to conduct an election. So that is no tax increase, simply going out and asking for the same or lesser amount of a previously-approved referendum. The data shows that almost all renewal elections are approved. It's over 95%, closer to 100%. Our third overarching priority is to support a diverse and sustainable workforce of teachers and school staff. The ability of schools to educate students and keep them safe depends on teachers and other caring adults who work in our schools. As we all know, school districts have and continue to face a serious shortage of staff needed to provide mission-critical services to students. And we also need to hire additional teachers of color and staff of color to be more representative of the students we serve. To that end, we ask the legislature increase funding for programs like the Increased Teachers of Color Act that are designed to increase the number of teachers of color in Minnesota schools and entering teacher prep programs. In the area of teacher licensure, we ask the legislature to maintain multiple pathways to obtain teacher licensure and establish reciprocity with other states. And we also ask the legislature to remove barriers and provide incentives to address the growing shortage of paraprofessionals, substitute teachers, and other support staff in our schools. The photo on this slide I'll just mention is a college fair that was held at Rosemount High School in November, sponsored by the Minnesota Association of Counselors of Color. And we, we do do quite a bit in the district, our own efforts to try and expose our students to the profession of teaching and following up with them. So we're, we're doing what we can. We want to ask the state to give us some assistance as well. So in summary, the LAC and administration are recommending approval of the 2023 legislative priorities as presented. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Tony. The approval of the 2023 legislative priorities is an action item today, so I'll ask for a motion and a second.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Jackie, a second by Art. Are there any questions and comments from the audience on this? Questions and comments from the board members? Please, Jackie, go ahead.
So just to add a quick question. You mentioned that once it is approved, it will be available on the website to the public, but it will be available on the website? Or is it available now?
Our priorities, once, once approved, will be on our website, yes.
All right, thank you.
I would just like to thank all of the citizens and staff that are on our committees that have helped draft this. It's not just the board, it's input with the board and with citizens and staff, not only on our legislative committee, but on our Budget Advisory Committee, that has put input into this and are also helping provide that message to legislators as we go forward. And yes, it will be online, so people can see that. And if you have questions, read through this. If you still have questions, call Tony or any of the rest of us, and we can help walk you through this. But this is a great thing to talk to your legislators about, about why funding is important, why stable funding for our district is important, why helping, maybe the state could help get more teachers of color into the rank of teaching, wanting to be teachers. So there's a lot of things going on, and you can hear, read a lot of things in the paper about what's going on at the legislature, and some of them affect us and some of them don't. And this is a great place to start if you're interested in that. So thank you to everybody.
There are many things that we could address in the priorities. We take, we try to take a focused approach, and I think this year more than ever calls for a focused approach. Fund the things that we haven't been funding, that the state has not been funding, before we expand a lot of new funding and new programs.
Thank you, Jackie. I'll just say, you know, if spending Valentine's Day at the Capitol isn't a testament for the commitment of the LAC to the students, I don't know what is. So thank you for doing that.
That's right, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, oh, I need to ask for a vote.
You got the motion.
I got the motion, yes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. All right, passes on a six to zero margin. All right, with that, we are at the board member and superintendent's update part of the agenda. Board members with any updates? Superintendent?
I would like everyone to know that we are out in the community sharing information about our bond referendum election on May 9th. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to pick up one of our little information cards. We presented to the Dakota County Chambers of Commerce Public Affairs Committee last week and are presenting to local Rotary Clubs this week, as well as other community organizations, school site councils, and PTOs, and will continue to be out in the community leading up to Election Day on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. Early voting actually begins March 24th. So be sure to go to our website or take a look at one of our information cards for more information about the bond campaign and to find out where you can go to vote and to be fully informed. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we've come to the end of our agenda. For adjournment, I'd like to ask a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry.
Motion from Bianca, second for Jackie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes on a six to zero margin, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.